That comes with Paul at eight o'clock.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Which flag was supposed to salute any of that? Um, that's a good question. I did that one.
We are missing Kwanah tonight, and he is down south dealing with the hurricane. He spent a week, I think, South Carolina, and now he's in Florida waiting for that one to go through and help out down there. So. Approval of tonight's agenda? I'll make a motion to approve agenda for the October ninth special meeting. Joe second discussion. All in favor say aye. Motion carried. September twentieth or twenty twenty-four meeting minutes. Did you all got a copy of those? September eleventh. And thank you again for doing those. I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes as presented. I got a second. Any discussions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carried. Public comments for agenda items only. I'll open public comments. Hearing none, I guess I'll close them. Dave Kelsey is not here tonight. Dave Burnwell, any?
You're not at the township recording this last meeting.
Understood, yeah.
Next Monday is next township recording.
Just a couple of things that we need, I guess. I'm not sure what they're gonna do for the recording secretary or either by opening, I guess. I don't know what the plan was there. And then also, we need to update our, we need a better map for the township when it comes to, what do I want to say? The different zonings that we have. Yep. And if that can be like a twenty twenty-five project, that probably costs a little bit. They couldn't work, I mean, we'll put Danielle probably on that, so. Public hearing, I'll open up the first public hearing for the ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance to regulate wind energy systems, PA two three three. I'll open that public hearing up. No comments on the wind? Then I'll close that public hearing.
That letter you had to read, you have to read that now or at the end?
Um.
I just want to make sure it wasn't for, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know what it says, but it's just. Is it like a public comment for it or I don't?
Yeah, I'll, I'll read it for this one. Yeah, good idea, so. Before I close the public comment for wind energy, I received an email today, Wednesday, October ninth, at four oh five P M. From Robert Scott. And the title of this is compatible renewable energy ordinances. So it kind of goes probably with all three of them. Phil, I'm writing this, I'm writing you as the Chair of the Cato Township Planning Commission regarding the possible adoption of the Cato Township compatible renewable energy ordinances, Creo, under PA two thirty-three. I am a retired real estate developer lawyer. Having spent my entire forty-year legal career with Miller Johnson Law Firm in Grand Rapids, my wife and I own a cottage on Evans Lake in Sidney Township and have been very involved over the past four years in encouraging several townships in Montgomery County, including, including Cato Township to adopt protective wind and solar ordinances. As I'm sure you're aware, some of these townships like Cato are now considering an adoption of a Creos to supplement their existing wind and solar ordinances and to add new battery energy ordinances. Those other townships, including Douglas, Douglas, Winfield, Maple Valley, my wife and I have attended special board meetings in Sidney Township this past Monday, and I believe that they are also headed in that direction. I've attached a copy of a document I prepared which outlines the options that will be available to wind and solar developers to obtain approval of their projects once the PA two thirty-three becomes effective. I've had several documents reviewed by the municipal lawyers at Foster Swift, and they agree with what I have written. I've also copied this email to Leslie Adu at Foster Swift. Please feel the share this document with your board and P C members if you think it might be helpful for them. You will note that I have blind copied, or not blind copied, I have copied Randy Clark Hubbard on this email. Let me know if you have any questions. Thank you, Robert Scott. He has doc, he has attached a Word document that I'll read through. It's titled, "The Wind/Solar Developers Option Under PA Two Thirty-Three." After PA two thirty-three becomes effective on November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, the developer of a utility-scale wind or solar project will have three possible paths for obtaining approval of this project, of this project. Number one, approval of a local township under existing ordinance. The developer will continue to have the option of making an application under the wind/solar ordinances that was in place in the township prior to PA two thirty-three taking effect. There's, there is noting in PA two thirty-three that requires the developer to take advantage of its provisions. It might be, it might be the case, for example, in several townships in Grashit and Isabella Counties, which continue to have wind-friendly ordinances and where the adoption of Creos provisions explained below seems unlikely. Compliance with the local requirements may be significantly less difficult, expensive, and/or time-consuming than seeking approval through the Michigan Public Service Commission, M P S C. For example, PH two thirty-three requires developers of wind products to install aircraft detection lighting systems that turn the flashing red lights on only when an aircraft is in the area. Most wind-friendly ordinances have no such requirement. Number two, approval of the M P S C under PA two thirty-three. If a township has not adopted a compatible renewable energy ordinance Creo, applicable, applicable to the proposed project, the developer may apply directly with the M P S C for approval. A Creo is defined as a PA three two thirty-three as an ordinance that provides for the development of wind of utility-scale wind, solar, and/or battery storage facilities within a township, the requirements of which are no more restrictive than the height, sound, setback, and shadow flicker provisions of the Act. In such an event, the developer will only be required to comply with the provisions of the PA two thirty-three as well of reg, as well as the regulations which they have yet to be finalized by adoption of the M P S C to implement, to implement PA two thirty-three. None of the local township provisions, including land use limitations, will apply. As the initial step for pursuing this option, developer will require to hold a public meeting regarding a project in the township where the project is proposed. The developer will also be required to make available to the township the sum of seventy-five thousand dollars, but not more than a hundred fifty thousand dollars for a single project if more than two townships are involved. Those funds are to cover the cost incurred by the township to contest, to contest the application before the M P S C. That contest will likely be limited to the determination of whether the project complies with the PA two thirty-three and its regulations could include changes, challenges to the accuracy of the studies, reports, and other information provided by the developer. The M P S C will have up to a year to act on the application. And number three, approval of a local township under the Creo. Foster Swift proposed having townships amend its existing wind and solar ordinances to incorporate the PA two thirty-three standard, standards for height, sound, setback, and shadow flicker, but leave in place all under ordinance provisions that are not expressly mandated by the Act. Those provisions would include, for example, requiring liability, insurance, an escrow account for review costs, a complaint resolution process, screening of solar projects, a decommissioning plan, and the preparation of all necessary studies and reports for qualified professionals agreed upon by the township and the developer. Foster Swift has also indicated that the township can limit the num, limit the wind and solar developments to certain areas of the township so long as the limits are not exclusionary. And Doug's with township, Foster Swift has proposed approximately five hundred acres, a five hundred acre area in the northeast section of the township because that area is not far from the electric transmission lines and a substation in day township and has a lower density of homes. The fact that the owners of the properties in the area may not be willing to lease the land or the solar does not matter according to Foster Swift. Effective date of this ordinance amendments would coincide with the effective act of two thirty-three, and those amendments would continue to apply so long as Act two thirty-three remains in effect. It is the option of Foster Swift and its townships, wind and solar ordinances modified in this manner would qualify as a Creos. Applications for solar and wind projects in the township that has Creo must be submitted to the townships and not, at least initially, to the M P S C. However, if an application is not approved or denied within a hundred and twenty days of the township receiving the application or for up to an additional hundred and twenty days as agreed between the township and the developer, the developer can simply file with the M P S C. And B, the developer may also side-set the township and file an application with the M P S C if the application submitted to the township complies with the height, sound, setback, shadow flicker provisions of the Act, but the township denies the application. If the township denies the application based on the Creo requirements other than the height, sound, setback, and shadow flicker, Foster Swift is of the opinion that the option will be available, will not be available to the developer. However, it is likely that a lawsuit will resolve from this question. In either case of the PA two thirty-three, standards and regulations will apply and not the township's Creo. Also, if the application is initially filled into with the township under Creo, but the developer is permitted to file with the M P S C for one of the reasons the developer will not be required make, will not be required to make the seventy-five thousand available to the township to cover the cost of the testing of the application with the M P S C. In order to keep the developer from pursuing, pursuing either of the M P S C option or the township may be able to take the position that the application under the Creo is not deemed received until the complete, is complete in all respects, including the requirements of the site, plans, decommissioning plans, complaint resolution plans, leased property owner documents, and all studies and reports, and other information required by the Creos. Also, the township may be able to refuse the application that includes property not designated for wind and solar development by the township. In that case, the township would take the position that the hundred twenty-day review period has not started to run until the application meets all the required, our ordinance requirements. The developer may claim that the township wind/solar development area limited makes the Creo exclusionary, but the developer would likely first have to apply to the township for the ordinance amendments asking that its proposed projects be added to the area allowed by the township for wind and solar development. Only if that request is turned down could the developer sue the township and ask a court to determine that the ordinance is exclusionary. But even then, the township may be able to negate the develop exclusionary zoning claim by expanding the wind so, wind and/or solar development areas without necessarily including some of the needed or any of the developer, developers' proposed project site. Prepared by Robert W. Scott, Sidney Township, nine twenty-four twenty-four. So. Any other public comments?
Okay, so what, what does that mean? I don't know what it means.
Yes, Robert Scott.
Okay.
Well, there's. So I'll close public comments for the ordinance to amend zoning ordinance to regulate wind energy systems, PA two thirty-three. So, as a commission, I guess, I'm gonna ask you gentlemen that, are you all, do you have any comments since last being on the proposed ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance to regulate the energy systems in accordance with PA two thirty-three of twenty twenty-three? Okay. Hearing none then? I'll set that aside then. Public hearing on the ordinance to amend zoning ordinance to regulate the solar energy systems, PA two thirty-three. I'll open up the public comments for that amendment.
So, the only thing that I read through it that I didn't notice was in there? And maybe I just overlooked it because I was half, half asleep when I was reading it. I thought Leslie had stated like a certain amount of acreage? And I didn't see that in there. I may have overlooked it though, so correct me if I'm wrong.
Any other public comments? And then I'm just gonna ditto Robert Scott's compatible renewable energy ordinances that I read for the wind. Hearing other public comments for the zoning ordinance to regulate solar energy systems, PA two thirty-three, I'll close public comments. And gentlemen, if you want to, you have the ordinance that's, that. Questions, comments? I think the acreage requirement would still be in the original portion of our solar ordinances and just adding on to.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think this is.
I, I knew that, but I didn't know, I didn't see anywhere where there was an addendum or anything like that to it.
If you remember, we talked about that our last meeting, yes? And we tried to figure out, I think, how many acres we had. And I know Leslie did a little bit digging into that along with Danielle that did our master plan. We have tentatively come up with about, I guess I'll say this, I believe we have about two hundred and sixty-seven acres when you look at east of ninety-one down forty-six. And I think there's about, estimated about sixty-five acres if you look at going west and south on ninety, or of ninety-one down forty-six. So, to the public comment about that, I, I think we believe we have over three hundred acres when it comes to that. So.
Thank you.
But moving forward, I guess, that's why I said we need to get a different type of a system we can use for that in twenty twenty-five. So everybody else is all settled, any other questions, comments on the solar energy ordinance, PA two thirty-three? No, hearing none? Public hearing number three, the ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance to regulate the utility-scale battery energy storage system. We talked about this our last meeting, and I think you guys are gonna copy that and I gave some to the public there. I'll open up a public hearing for comments on the utility-scale battery energy system, storage system. Hearing none, I'll close public comments on the ordinance to amend zoning ordinance to regulate the utility-scale battery energy storage systems. And commission, you have the ordinance there in front of you, and we talked about this our last meeting. That will come for discussion as far as anything you'd like to discuss. Hearing none, I guess I'm gonna move on then. So that being said, we have three ordinances in front of us that we had our public hearings tonight on. I would like to make a recommendation on a resolution to, for approval of the ordinances to amend the zoning ordinance regulating utility-scale battery energy storage systems, the wind energy system, and the solar energy systems as presented. Can I get a second?
All right, we'll second.
Jay coming for a second, the recommendation on approving the ordinances of zoning regulate the utility-scale battery energy storage systems, the wind energy systems, and the solar energy systems as presented. Discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll do roll call vote. Joe May?
Yes.
David Burnwell?
Yes.
Jay Cummings?
Yes.
Phil Morrow, yes, and absent is Kwanah Striker. So, the motion of the resolution recommend the approval of the ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance regulating utility-scale battery energy storage systems, wind energy systems, and the P, or the solar energy, wind and solar energy systems is adopted. And then, Dave, I'll have you take that to the board at your meeting next week, right? Old Business, Lakefront Residential, L R District. I got a copy of the proposed ordinance there. This will be number nineteen. I'll kind of, I mean, I guess I'll kind of read through it a little bit. Purpose of this, lands in the district are characterized by use which strongly oriented towards the residential and recreational experience and enjoyment of a surface waterways and shorelines of Cato Township. It's the intent of the district to provide regulations of lands located along lakefronts and shorelines areas of the township. Purpose of these regulations is to recognize the unique physical, economic, and social attributes for lakefront shore properties and to ensure that the structures and the use in these districts are compatible with and protect those unique attributes. Nineteen oh one is permitted uses. We agreed on the no land or building in the L R District shall be used, directed, altered, or converted in whole or in part except for the following purposes and the right to permit, permitted uses. Single-family detached dwelling, state-licensed residential, child, family, fair, family care, and adult care facilities. The accessory building structures and use custom art, custom, really incidental to a permitted use. Parks, playgrounds, areas, and other passive, open space areas. And then the camping temporary and short-term subject to section three. We'll talk more about that just a little bit here. Special land use, land use and/or buildings in the L R District may be used for the following special land use. Subject should review by the planning commission as a special land use. Bed and breakfast establishments, golf course, company clubs, boat launches, cemeteries, churches, private schools, municipal buildings, and attached residential dwellings up to four units per acre. Any questions on nineteen oh one and nineteen oh two? Additions, subtractions? And then we have the nineteen oh three, the schedule of the Lake Residential District Regulations. No building structure or use of the land, nor the enlargement of any building, structure, or use of land shall hereafter occur unless the following requirements are met, maintained in connection with such building structures use or enlargement. Setbacks, dimensional items, and the standard requirements. And we need to discuss this a little bit, but I think when it comes to the lakeback, lakeside backs or setback, which would be the front yard, we agreed, where we talked about twenty-five feet. Everybody okay with that? Side yards, seven feet. The road setback, which would be their backyard, fifteen feet. And then the height of the building would be thirty-five feet or two and a half stories. I think we talked about the footy, but I don't think we really had anything there stories or height, but that was a recommendation from Leslie. Lot coverage area? Some discussion there?
Some of the other districts, like the M R District, lot coverage is twenty-five percent. What, another twenty-five percent? Which in the lake area, I don't know if that would work. I wrote down thirty-five percent as far as the recommendation, but that's maybe we should pull it off. We have different neighboring townships have some different numbers out there. But we need to come up with a, for the lot coverage. I put that as well as far as maximum. What would the average in other townships?
Some a little bit more than that, some a little bit less than that, I mean, you could.
Less than thirty-five or less than twenty-five?
Uh, no, not, not less than twenty-five. I, I say thirty-five, yeah, I'm just going off thirty-five. But yeah, some a little bit more and some a little bit less.
Thirty-five is good. Yeah, just trying to, thank you much, no, no.
Makes around here.
Lakes around here. I think thirty-five percent around here, you're talking major.
Yeah. Good.
I think thirty-five.
And we can always change that later on, we have a public hearing and stuff, so. Uh minimum lot air, uh area. Um I've seen anything from as less as six thousand up to above eleven thousand. Fifteen thousand. That's the minimum lot area.
Small ones like mine.
Mm-hmm.
A little eleven.
That's what I got down there, that's kind of like. Hold that Jake. Minimum lot width? I wrote seventy-five, three. Seventy-five?
Oh, did you get it here, you guys?
No.
Yeah.
Good. Jake?
Just trying to think about our, our side yard, if we have seven foot on either side, there's fourteen foot. Something looking at.
I think my parents sold it forty.
White house. I know a lot of, a lot of white houses are going a long ways, a lot of the property newer ones, newer style. So I think that would be, that would be one of the.
And then the minimum dwelling unit floor area. And we'll get square footage. The minimum square footage.
Eight hundred. Eight hundred.
What were you, eight hundred and the other one?
Um I changed some up through that, there, I mean, I see nine sixty, I see a thousand.
I said eight hundred. Yeah, well, our ordinance was. You said nine fifty to a thousand?
Yeah, that, I mean, I wrote down a thousand slash nine sixty, I mean, I think somewhere in between that, I would think. And again, we can change that based on some more feedback from the public as far as when it comes to that, um.
In our rural is eight fifty. Suburban residential is seven fifty.
So a little high, you think?
I would think that'd be the seven fifty, seven fifty or eight hundred.